Sorry about that. How's everyone doing? Good? Everyone's good? You guys are good? Cool, cool, cool. So as a reminder to the public, if you'd like to speak in the public comment or any agenda items, please fill out a blue speaker form and hand it to the clerk, Jessica Cooper right there. And then, once we get to that section, we'll call you up accordingly. Thank you. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Patel?
Here.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Here.
Chair Fang?
Here.
Okay. Larry, you want to start us off on the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. Please stand. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All righty, here we go. Is there any speakers for a public comment?
No, I have not received any.
Okay. And so, moving on, is there any additions or deletions that the commission would like to add or change to the consent calendar?
I have none.
I have none.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve, as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fang?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, so it looks like we have one item on the agenda for a public hearing. Moving on to 6.1, just as a reminder, the items that you sign up for, we will call you up accordingly. There is a time limit, I believe it's three minutes per speaker. And you can address the commission to ask any questions on the agenda item, but we wouldn't be able to comment to you or give you any answers tonight. So, but we will accept all comments in consideration. Thank you. So, moving on to item 6.1, let's see. Okay, and Eric, do we have a presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Eric Norris, your planning director. Item 6.1 is a request from the 99 cent store for a conditional use permit to sell alcohol in their new store, which is currently under construction. The planner for that project is Brienne Reyes behind me, and I will turn it over to her for the presentation. I believe we have a representative from the applicant in the audience tonight, in case there are any questions specific to the applicant. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brienne.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. The project before you this evening is a conditional use permit for the off-site sale of beer and wine at a new 99 cent store located at the northwest corner of Hamner Avenue and Schlesman Road. The 99 cent store was approved by Planning Commission on June 17th, 2015, and is shown The 99 cent store is currently under construction, and these pictures show the progress of This is an illustration showing existing off-site alcohol sales within 1,000-foot radius of the project site. The zoning code requires noticing to all property owners within 1,000 feet of the project site. Staff then analyzes the other alcohol sales points using the data to find alcohol sales within 1,000 feet of the site. And the 7-Eleven is shown in green right here. The alcohol will be stored away from the front entrance. This location has been reviewed by the police department, and they did not foresee any conflicts with the storage location. The front entrance is shown in blue right here. The floor plan shows an outline of the proposed storage location, that the room, temperature packs of beer and single bottles of wine will be stored. No cold storage is proposed at this time. Staff has reviewed this option and does not see an issue if the store sold cold alcohol in the future. The COAs do not limit the store from selling cold beer and wine.
Brienne, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Mm-hmm.
Susan, I need to ask you a question. I received a memo or the notification of what was going on here. I live within 1,000 feet, but I do not live within 600 feet. Am I okay to be here?
Since you live outside of the 600-foot range, it's okay.
Yeah, I'm outside the 600, but I'm inside the 1,000.
Which is for the noticing of the issue.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
It's okay. These are a summary of the conditions provided by the police department and prepared by staff. A few of these conditions are: the sale of beer and wine will occur, only occur between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. daily; refrigerated beverages are permitted to be sold; sale of beer and wine will occur within the retail store; a surveillance monitoring system will be installed; and employees must be trained prior to selling alcohol. Staff received nine public comments in opposition to the project today. The main concerns are the proximity to schools from the store and not wanting to see more stores selling alcohol because they are concerned that this would create more crime. The next few slides show the proximity of schools to existing alcohol sales and the 99 cent store. This shows that the proximity of 99 cent store to schools is similar to that 7-Eleven store that is just north of the site, right here. The distance from the 7-Eleven store to the Eastvale Elementary School is about 2,613.7 feet from here to here. From the 99 cent store to the Eastvale Elementary School is 2,560.1 feet. From the 99 cents to River Heights Intermediate School is 2,476.1 feet. And from the Eleanor Roosevelt School to the 99 cent store is 2,796. This shows that 7-Eleven at the Albertson Shopping Center is in closer proximity to schools than the proposed 99 cent store. Rosa Parks Elementary to the 7-Eleven is 2,435.1 feet. Dr. Augustine Ramirez Intermediate School to the 7-Eleven is 1,932.3 feet. And the 7-Eleven to the Clara Barton Elementary School is 3,219.7 feet. This shows the distance between the existing Ralphs and the Harada Elementary School to be about 1,674.5 feet, which is shorter than the 99 cent store to the other schools shown in the previous slides. This image shows the walking distance of approximately 3,000 feet from the 99 cent store to the corner of Scholar Way where the schools are located. This image shows the walking distance of approximately 5,600 feet from the 99 cent store to the high school, Eleanor Roosevelt High School. The Eastvale Police Department has reviewed the request and did not foresee any conflicts with the sale of alcohol at this location. The 99 cent store is not in the ABC limits that would require a request for a public convenience or necessity determination. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve an exemption to sequel for the project and approve the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions of approval. If the commission does not wish to approve the project, here are other options for the This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here this evening to answer any questions.
Oh, yes, you'll be called on. Just wait a second, and we'll call you up. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could just add, maybe just another little bit to Brienne's presentation. So, what we're dealing with here tonight, for the audience, and I'm sure you don't deal with this as often as we do, is called a conditional use permit. And what that means is, in our, we have zoning districts, and this is in a retail zone. And there are certain uses in a retail zone that are just permitted. A shoe store, a bookstore, are just permitted. In our zoning code, any sale of alcohol requires a conditional use permit. And what that means is a couple of things. It means that it's not permitted by right. They need to come to the Planning Commission to receive permission to do the use. So, the commission, first of all, has to make a couple of findings, which we can talk about in more detail, basically that it's consistent with the general plan and the zoning, and that it won't be detrimental to the public, health, safety, welfare, comfort, et cetera. So you have to be able to make those two findings in order to approve this use permit. Then, if the commission wants to approve it, we have the ability to put conditions on the use, hours of operation, where the alcohol can be stored, things like that. So, that's what's in front of the commission tonight, is whether those findings can be made and whether the use permit can be approved, and if so, what kind of conditions should be put on the sale of alcohol at this location. So those are basically the items that are being presented to the commission for you all to debate and come to a decision on. A conditional use permit like this is a decision that the Planning Commission can make in terms of approval or denial. If, whichever way they go, that decision can be appealed to the city council, but unless it's appealed, the Planning Commission's decision is final. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Brienne, for the presentation. And open public hearing now. Is there any comments for this?
Would you like the applicant to come up?
I mean, is, should we have the applicant first, then?
Mr. Chair?
Perhaps, still not on. Oh, there we go. Thanks. Perhaps Planning Director Norris can also mention that a conditional use permit, if I'm understanding, can be granted one day, and for any reason, if it misses something, it can be taken away. Is that correct?
Yeah, the process is, once a, if a conditional use permit is granted, there are conditions imposed. If the city finds that those conditions are not being complied with, if they're, for instance, limited to selling between 8:00 and 11:00, and we found that they were open until, selling alcohol until midnight, we would first work with the applicant to correct that violation, but if they continue that, we would bring it back to the commission, and the commission would hold a public hearing, and if they found that conditions had been violated, you could revoke the conditional use permit.
All right, thank you.
And in that case, in this particular case, if it was granted and then revoked, they would have to stop selling alcohol.
Mr. Chair, just kind of following up on that one. Eric, could you kind of explain or explain further the one, the sentence that's in the staff report, that the CUP is attached to the land?
Yes.
And therefore, if another use comes in, let's say 99 cent store falls through, and then another tenant comes in, that that is also attached to the land, therefore they can start selling alcohol? Is that, could you just kind of explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. The terminology we usually use is that an approval like this runs with the land. So although 99 cent store is the applicant in this case, if the use permit is approved, it's attached to the land, and whoever buys that land, or whoever runs that store, is able to operate under that conditional use permit, subject to the same conditions, but the conditions and the use permit stay with the land regardless of who the operator is. So if 99 cent store is the operator today, and they sell to Smart &amp; Final, Smart &amp; Final would be able to start selling, would be able to continue selling alcohol, subject to the same conditions.
So technically, under any of the C1CP or commercial type of uses that are permitted under that zoning, and by right, they can come in and start using the license, the CUP as well, that's attached to it?
Yeah, if the use permit was granted, and it was not revoked for any reason, then any operator of the store could sell alcohol, subject to those conditions.
Yeah, thank you.
And does the applicant have a presentation for us?
I do, since I'm getting to be planning to speak, all right, and I do have a short presentation that I'd like you to do, because it's basically a form of my report to that I have, and I, I'm trying to distribute it, sorry.
Well, that's Jessica, she'll be able to pass those out.
Before the material arrives here, I will say this. For the record, we concur with the staff's findings and recommendations, and for the record, we do agree all of the draft conditions and approvals.
Thank you.
Just on the record there.
Thank you.
I'll just kind of just get that, just to. So, real quickly, so you both get a quick point for it. Oh, is the PowerPoint presentation there? Let me just tell you a little bit about 99 cent only stores. 99 cent only stores operates 300-plus stores in the state of California. I think the number is actually like 315 stores, that they operate just in the state of California. We also operate in the state of Texas, as well as the state of Arizona, and the state of Nevada. In our stores here in California, we have approximately 110 of those stores that currently sell alcohol as our standard inventory. Part of my goal, and the reason I go to CDU is that it's 99 cent only stores, desire to have every one of those stores offer beer and wine per se. 99 cent only stores has started in 1982. It's a great Southern California story. Started in 1982 in Los Angeles, and has now expanded into this very, very large organization. But in the last 10 to 15 years, they've really changed up their entire product line and their entire operation to be a traditional grocery store. If you've had an opportunity to shop into a 99 cent only store, you'll find a very, very large produce section. We have fresh bread. Thank you for turning the slide. We offer milk, and eggs, and cheese, and all sorts of other grocery products, and most of our customers, thank you so much. So, most of our customers are there for the purchase of groceries. Our typical customer is going to be somewhere, the entire range of the spectrum, it's an adult population. They're either there shopping for a family, which is going to be most part the D-Wind, as well as senior citizens on fixed income. We're extremely cost-conscious, these customers are extremely cost-conscious. Now, the answer to the question is, not everything is 99 cents in the store. Back in 1982, everything was 99 cents allowed. But oftentimes, most of our products are priced at 99 cents. Not our beer and wine. We're not able to offer six-packs of beer for 99 cents. Our typical retail value of a six-pack or a bottle of wine will range anywhere from $3.99 to $10.99. We always have the 99 cents in our pricing, $9.99, $2.99, $3.99. And it's because, you know, that was the name that we started with, and we continue to go with it, but consumers have learned that there is excellent, excellent values that come into 99 cent only stores. Yes, you can buy two picks for 99 cents. And what we do is, we get customers there, they're cost-conscious, they're coming here multiple times each and every week to shop at our stores, because they know that they're getting really very fast, and they're buying their produce there on a regular basis. And our request this evening is to simply be able to offer those same grocery store customers the ability to buy beer or wine, and be able to take home and enjoy at a later date. I'm getting a little bit more into that, but just real quickly, you probably saw it on the brochure that I gave you, and some people that I presented you have had an opportunity to be in a store. This is one of our new stores, obviously, and very excited to be here in the city of Eastvale. Big brand new store, it's kind of truly look great on the interiors. But again, and I'll stop a little bit at this slide, because we can carry brands. I mean, you know, and I see Colgate up there, I see, you know, all the different Comet, and so on and so forth. I mean, we are a bona fide, you know, grocery stores, like selling national, nation, you know, brand new types of products. And that would be a typical wine display that we would have in the store. And this is where I'll stop and talk just a couple minutes more there. But, we're a very, very large corporation. We take our business extremely seriously. We have policies and procedures in place for the, to make sure that we're responsible sellers of beer and wine. We train all of our employees. And remember, this is a very large corporation. We have fiduciary responsibilities for our employees, to make sure that they're very, very well-trained, not just in safety, but also in other areas, and especially when it comes to selling alcohol. We close our stores every night at 10:00. We open typically at 8:00 p.m. We only store our alcohol in, at warm. We don't dedicate any cooler space for it. We all, you know, we're selling only six-packs, you know, warm six-packs, so it hopefully kind of takes the idea that who we're selling to, is somebody that's doing their normal grocery shopping, and wants to make that purchase of a bottle of wine or some beer, and take it home with them, refrigerate it, and then enjoy it at a later date. We're not like some of the other stores that refrigerate there, or, you know, offer the singles, and so on and so forth. We obviously have a very, very large video surveillance system. This store probably has out there the 15 or 16 different surveillance cameras. We limit the amount of area that we're displaying our alcohol to 36 feet. Our shelves are only two feet deep, that's 72 square feet total. A store that's about 20,000 square feet, that's like 1/10 of 1% of the overall store of the store space that we actually dedicate toward to display alcohol. It's intended to simply be a convenience item for somebody who's doing their normal grocery shopping, so that we can stay competitive with every other grocery store in Southern California, so that when somebody's doing their shopping, and they want to make that purchase, they've done buying all of their items, and they would like to make a purchase of a bottle of wine, they don't have to go to another location to simply make that purchase. Last couple of quick slides that I have are, this is a really unique store. There's a lady, Christine Georgie, that writes a book that's about 99 cent only store, and it's a cookbook. Every ingredient she quotes in there came from the 99 cent only store. And it has this, kind of this whole following, if you would, her cookbook does. We do offer groceries. We also offer, you know, great healthy foods. Yes, we still stock some clothing items. We're very much known for party supplies. We'll continue to carry that, but again, probably 75% to 80% of our sales kind of has grocery-type of lot, traditional grocery-type of items. We do offer unique wines from time to time. True story, Ruth Chris Steakhouse have a private label bottle of wine made from Wyrre in Napa Valley. The Wyrre overmade the wine, and Ruth Chris Steakhouse didn't buy all of the cases, and they sold them to 99 cent only stores. Now, I've never eaten at a Ruth Chris Steakhouse, but I understand it's a pretty high-end dining place. My guess is their house wine was going to be a pretty high-end type of wine. And 99 cent only stores bought the rest of the cases, were selling them for $7.99 only, and my contacts at 99 cent only stores did not have them. So, I just like, I wanted a great opportunity, but I didn't get a chance to make that purchase. Anyway, that was a, just a little side note, they are looking to be competitive in the grocery store business. The gentleman that has been running our company for the last few years, has got that gentleman who used to be in senior management at Proverd Stores, which in Southern California, they operate Ralphs and Uprores. And he's been CEO since September 2015, I believe. And it just kind of demonstrates that our emphasis is on being a grocery store for a few years. This was just the quick little, couple of anecdotal information about, that's actually a jury, who, you know, wrote some pretty interesting things about, you know, the opportunities to buy really high-quality types of wines, and Chowal.com are one of the people that actually, who also wrote the Ruth Chris Steakhouse wines that were available to 99 cents. So with that, I also gave you an article that appeared on People.com, written by Harley Pasternak, who's a pretty famous, I guess, blogger about food, and he wrote an article about how a parent in his care shot exclusively at a 99 cent only store for healthy items, and proceeded to lose, you know, 50 pounds. So, I use that article to emphasize that this is a great grocery store, there are some great doctors here, and we would just simply like to be able to offer a complete inventory of products that most consumers who use good beer in California, in that it being a, make a small purchase of beer and wine, and it will be a grocery store. So with that, I appreciate your attention, and I appreciate your consideration of this matter, and for the record, we do agree all of the conditions of approval, available to answer any additional questions you both might have.
Thank you. Commission, have any questions? You can start with Commissioner Lee.
Sure. I guess I have a few questions for the staff, but I also have a question for the applicant. Just out of curiosity, I know that 99 cent store here is not operational, right? So why, at this point, are you asking for a CUP on the alcohol sales?
So that we'll be able to ensure we can offer that product at that time.
Okay, I mean, just, because it could, it could come in, you know, is it your business, basically a business decision to do that? Because you said you have about 1/3 that sells alcohol, but about 2/3 that don't. So why, in this particular location, you felt that, at this point, that you have to have the wine and beer sale?
The decision was made a couple of years ago, that in order for us to be competitive in the grocery businesses, that we needed all of our stores to be able to sell beer and wine. So several years ago, we started licensing more and more of our stores. But the corporate mantra is that every new store, we are going to be asked, you know, offering beer and wine, and any new store that we're opening. And I am going back now, and some of the stores that, you know, were open many years ago, I'm going back to those communities, and asked to be willing to open, to offer beer and wine. But in this particular case, it's a brandish, a branded store, and it's the company's desire that all new stores have a complete offering of beer and wine. And it does get more and tougher to get all of your store license, and there's other procedures, and so on and so forth, and everyone expects to doing that, so there is a method to the madness we're going about with these stores here.
Commissioner Patel?
No questions.
I have a couple of questions for the applicant. I guess, and I'm kind of running in line with my commissioner sitting next to me, is that my questions are, is the way we're building this building, it has not been very smooth. And one of the things that we look for in a city is the professionalism that a building's built. We also ask that it's the least impediment to the residents as possible. So that means we like to get the sidewalks in, we like to get the street done, we like it to where people can still walk, still walk to school. If they want to walk to 7-Eleven, they can still walk on a sidewalk, and things aren't going that smooth. I guess, uh, and I'm kind of running in line with, uh, my commissioner sitting next to me is that my, my questions are, is the way we're building this building, it has not been very smooth. And one of the things that we look for in a city is the professionalism that a building's built. We, we also ask that it's the least impediment to the residents as possible. So that means we like to get the sidewalks in, we like to get the street done, we like it to where people can still walk, still walk to school. If they want to walk to seven eleven, they can still walk on a sidewalk and things aren't going that smooth. Who's actually building the building? Is ninety-nine cent store building the building? Do you work for ninety-nine cents or are you a consultant? I mean, who, who are we dealing with here?
I'll, I'll let you have the answer. I'm a specialist. Ninety-nine cent only stores is a tenant in this building. There's another development company that actually owns the land and is the developer on the project. And they're the ones that hired contractors to build, to build the building. We don't take over until the building is completed and the hand is complete, so we're able to build it and do all our tenant improvements. I myself, Steve Rogers, I'm a third-party consultant for ninety-nine cent only stores. I work for him for the senior vice president of real estate. Um, and I go and my, my job or business is to assist them with getting permits and licenses necessary to be able to sell their beer and wine throughout the state of California. So that's, that's what I own is, um, the, uh, in this particular case, I, I did catch one really sweet, the construction hasn't gone very smoothly. We're not necessarily happy about that either. We were helping build this store a while back, but it is somewhat that it is, uh, somebody else's, is building the building for us. We want to be definitely by great corporate citizens. We want to be great makers. We offer, uh, you know, a tremendous product line and, um, all I can say to the necessary sort of apologies, the construction hasn't gone very well at that time. I, I don't think that we have much control over, over that part. Unless, unless the building's turned over to us, then we're in charge of all the tenant improvements and the landlord will be in charge of the maintenance. Obviously in our lease agreement, we pay triple net charges, which is, which is, you know, for the property maintenance and, and other bills that are there. We have an actual reputation about paying all of our bills on time, all the time. We're, we're great tenants for most, uh, for most of the shopping centers around us there. And we, and hopefully be a tremendous asset to you.
See, I'm a little disappointed in that because when ninety-nine cent store came forward, they were very clear, they were going to build that building. They were not going to sell that property. They told us point blank, they were going to build the building and they had to sell the other two lots. But they were going to sell those other two lots. They didn't tell us they weren't going to build it. So this is news to us or to me.
Commissioner, let me, let me verify what I just said to you. Okay. Because I, I could possibly be wrong. I, I work with a lot of these and I'm going to just try to check the, the ownership records here of, of, of that.
And it, it might not be that important at this point here because we're at, we're, we're at where we are at. But it just, it gives me hesitance when the way things have went and we're supposed to be looking at this now to determine what the future's going to hold when we haven't done very good with the present. Uh, you know, my question was, but it was already asked, that if there's three hundred stores, you answered that very well, that you're doing fifty stores a year. I, I get that. You can't take two hundred stores and say, okay, we're going to be present at all of them and go get it. I get it. So that makes sense. I just, we have a lot of people come forward here. We hear a lot of things about developers on what they want to do. And when I read the statement of justification, when it said what you guys offer versus what Smart and Final doesn't offer, I, I don't like that either. I called Smart and Final and said, do you offer this stuff? And they said, of course we do. We sell all this stuff. But in the statement of justification, it says Smart and Final doesn't. So it just, there's little things here that, you know, I struggle with going, wow, why would you say that if it's not the truth? If it's the truth from your side, okay. But there's just things that, you know, I look at it, it seems strange to me.
I am the gentleman that brought the statement of justification. I have walked Smart and Final in, uh, Lake Forest, California, because we have a similar, you know, type of territory there. And in those places, they cannot sell things like reading cards and a few other places in that store. Now, that was a broad statement. That may not apply to this particular location here. What I'm trying to demonstrate is that we are, are somewhat a unique, um, type of grocery store. We're not here around the building because we have that reputation. It's how we're very, very, um, very famous for selling like party supplies and some other, other items like that. And so I think what I was attempting to do was saying that, yeah, we are a little bit different. We're a very, very unique store. We're certainly proud of that in the sense that we are a little bit different than everybody else. We're not the same run-of-the-mill, um, I shouldn't say run-of-the-mill, but we're, we're not your average, you know, grocery store. We, we have offered products and we're, we're proud of that. We're very proud of the fact that we are, um, catering to very, very cost-conscious, um, individuals there. Um, because I've often told everybody, I said, you know, we're selling the same toothpaste for ninety-nine cents when other people are charging two ninety, you know, two fifty, three fifty for that. That's a good thing, I, I typically think there. So, um, you know, I come here with, you know, with the sincerest intentions. I think ninety-nine cent only is, is, is all business. We're very, very serious. We, we don't come into the communities, uh, and try to do anything other than be, be a very, very good corporate citizen. Up and down the, um, the lateral management, we take our business very, very seriously and we have had some success. And I think that is because we, we do run a very, very good ship as CEO. It's interesting. We've had a lot of technical improvements. All of our stores, this one's going to be beautiful when, when it's done. Um, and it's, and it, and I think it is going to be done here in the next sixty to ninety days, I, I hope. And, and it's going to be a beautiful store. It's like, we've invested millions of dollars in our other stores that have been around for a while, just, you know, doing, doing improvements. And, um, and I think that this store needs to be one of our, like our showcase stores. Like we're going to tell all of our people, this is what we want, all of our stores to look like. Because it's going to be very low merchandising and we're going to have really great pictures along the way.
Thank you. No more questions for the applicant.
Commissioner?
Yes, I do. Um, yes. Back to the issue of the C U P. What kind of brands of beer and wine are you going to be selling?
Um, that's a great question. And we sell a variety of beers. We do sell some local craft beers depending on which, which locals are here. Um, we, uh, I've, I've seen Bud, Bud Light. I've seen Budweiser in our stores. We've also sold some other types of, um, beers, um, you know, all of the, all of the names. Um, wines. I, I, I know that I've seen, you know, different types of gallon pack of wines. Um, we do pride ourselves on the fact that we do offer some unique wines. And we are one of those merchandisers that would allow, um, you know, some local brewers and crafters and give them shelf space. The national stores, it's very, very difficult sometimes to get shelf space, um, because they have contracts already with big national brands. And we actually pride ourselves on the fact that we give opportunity to some of the, uh, not, not, not the big nations.
Okay. The pricing on your beers and wine, are they going to be compatible with other, um, markets or are they going to be way underpriced?
No, I, I, what we have found is that our pricing, um, as I said earlier, is going to range anywhere from, let's say, three ninety-nine, let's just say seven ninety-nine is kind of an average type of price there for a bottle of wine. The cheapest wine that I know of is something that's called Two Buck Chop and that's at Trader Joe's. And they are still the cheapest bottle of wine. I mean, we don't need them and we probably never will. Um, and, and in terms of, you know, the six packs of beer, I'd have to say, well, you sell ninety-nine cent only six pack. Like the aluminum costs more than ninety-nine cents. So, you know, we're pricing it, you know, uh, four ninety-nine, five ninety-nine, you know, six ninety-nine for a six pack of beer. And, you know, we'll sometimes just sell, you know, the twelve packs and so on and so forth. So I, you know, it's a, it's a great question. It's valid question.
Yeah. My concern would be that it's so underpriced that, uh, it would be a magnet for, uh, minors to try and buy from that store. If it's compatible or close to regular retail, then, uh...
You know, it's interesting, you know, that, yeah, we are, yeah, we're, we're not selling all this, you know, cheap alcohol or anything like, like that out there. We're, we're, this product is true to being offered for the person that's there shopping for their family that is cost conscious. There's no question about it. We get a lot of senior citizens in our, in our stores there. In terms of, of minors, uh, we don't have, we have over a hundred licenses. We have no violations. If you go on the ABC website, look at every one of our licenses. There's no violations on any of our licenses that I can't remember today. Um, we don't, we haven't seen any issues because of the warm storage. You, you've got to get six at a time. Far easier to go to a place that's got singles in Cool or someplace else than it is to go get warm beer off of a shelf. And a fairly large grocery store is, is fairly busy. And we haven't seen that, that issue in, in our two big stores. Yeah, our customers are always, you know, they're shopping for their families.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Um, yep, okay.
Um, I was on the planning commission when this originally came up with Mr., with Commissioner Charleston. And it's my understanding, um, really the business model for Smart, for, whoops, sorry, ninety-nine cent, um, is really you've always pretty much been a tenant and it's really more the low-cost providing of valued goods for, for that market. I thought the actual original purchase of the land in Eastvale was one of very few that's ever been even done in corporate history. Is that right? Or what percentage do you actually own the land versus generally being a, a tenant as a lease, lease or?
Probably ninety percent of the time we are tenants. The, the property that are, properties that are owned, um, are typically, um, from years ago. The, the gold band has founded and started the company and, and they, they purchased a lot of their, you know, their buildings, uh, and so on and so forth. We don't have a lot of program on stores. Typically when I file a condition of use permit application, on the application, it requires a property owner's signature on that. And I, I did look on this and it would not be one of them. If you have somebody else sign it, that's why I happen to know that. I, I got, you know, I don't know the exact number, but I gotta be honest with you. It's like ninety or ninety-five percent of the time it's a third-party person that, that is signing the exact application. So that's why I say I don't know the number for sure. I, I, I just tell you by my own experience, I've done a lot of these that ninety percent of the time it's, it's somebody other than ninety-nine cent.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm things.
And we are on a long-term lease. Um, we're with major corporations and we're going to make a building. The developer's making a big investment into your community by building, building. We make a very, very large, uh, investment ourselves on fixturing, um, the, the particular facility there. In order for us to refit those costs, we have to amortize those. Our leases are a minimum of like a ten-year type of lease with multiple, uh, year options after that. And we, we knock out the certification of closing the store. We have closed some stores, but it's usually because we're relocating, you know, to a different part of the community. We're just going to work with here and talk about that.
I only have one question for now. Uh, is, what I'm hearing correctly is, are we the first location in this region to have alcohol currently or applying for?
Uh, I know that I know the one in Corona, Alco McKinley. Um, I got that license a couple of years ago. Uh, so we have one down in, in Corona. I believe that our location in Fontana, um, I, I don't know how many stores are, say, in this, in this fifteen corridor, uh, to back to La Marrietta, Lake Elsinore. Those are, I, I live down in that area there. Uh, I know our stores in Corona, um, all have, um, alcohol licenses in our store in Fontana. I know Daz and, you know, I don't know all of ours. We can't see it. Uh, Tario, I, I, we have several stores in Tario that, um, are licensed and do sell alcohol and, uh, uh, Chino, um, also I'm here in those stores there. Just kind of going up that area of some of the communities on the local, uh, locally. So, um, if that answers your, your question.
Yes, thank you. And, um, we're, we're, we're done for now. Yes, thank you.
Would I, do I have an opportunity later to address the Congresswoman?
Yes, yes, to address it, yes, yeah.
Thank you, thank you once again for everybody for your, your attention.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So moving on to, um, public comments for this public hearing.
Sure. We have, I, I have some questions, um, for staff. Yeah. Um, so I, you know, again, I, I think the two commissioners that were here in the past for the, for the development of the project from the beginning, is Commissioner Patel and Charleston. Um, but for, were you there? Okay, okay. So three of them. So for my benefit, could you give me a little bit more background on what is going on around, um, the development? Currently it looks like as, as if it's, it's kind of isolated that this is the first one to go in. What are the plans for the next few parcels that are, that are there? I know that the church is there right next door, um, but...
Jessica, could you put, Brienne's show up again and put up the aerial? Yeah, this one will probably, I think this is the best we're going to do. So, yeah, in terms of what's happening around the site here, so this is the, the projects that we're talking about. So ninety-nine, well, basically let's just kind of go around. So residential to the south, directly to the west is the New Day Church. That property is basically half-built. The southern half that's built, uh, down on Schleisman. And then they have the northern half, which they will come in at some point in the future, back to this planning commission for approval of their additional construction. Right north of, the northern half of this whole area that's in yellow is not yet planned. It's the other part of the residential property here, or not residential, retail property. We've been talking with the property owner. Uh, they plan to come in at some point in the future, but they, they're not planning on filing anything imminently. But they will be coming in with some kind of development on the northern half. So this whole area in yellow will ultimately be all retail development. So ninety-nine cent store here and then something else on the northern half. Uh, directly north of that is fire station twenty-seven. Uh, north of that is a vacant parcel owned by the city. That's called Al's Corner. That is currently part of an application that involves this property down here that we call the Palopolis property. That's a former plant nursery. And both of those project properties are together in, well, two separate applications that we're doing the environmental document for now to change the zoning on those to retail. Actually, the Al's Corner site is already zoned retail, but it's general planned residential. So we're proposing to change the general plan to retail as well. And then the Al's Corner site, uh, has a mixture of residential and floodway zoning. And the proposal there is to amend the general plan and the zoning to retail. South of that, this is all the Silver Lakes Soccer Complex. And then over here, uh, where, this is kind of an old aerial. This is, uh, D R Horton's project here. So that construction's actually done. That residential neighborhood is all already in place. So that's kind of what's going on in, in the area. And then as Brienne mentioned in her presentation, this up here is the seven eleven store. That's the existing alcohol sales outlet in that area.
Thank you.
I have one question for staff. How many, uh, and it may have said it in there, how many notifications did we actually send out?
We'll look that up before you get to that answer. But, uh, as, as mentioned, normally for a public hearing, we would send notices to all the property owners within six hundred feet. Because it's an alcohol use permit, we send that notice out, as Commissioner Charleston mentioned, to everyone within a thousand feet. So it's a substantially larger area. So Brienne will get the exact number, but it's probably several hundred notices that went out. Was also published in the newspaper and was on the city's website.
Thank you.
Moving on to, um, the public. How many speakers do we have today, Jessica?
Uh, I don't think we have speaker cards. We have, uh, I'll give this to the clerk in a moment. We have a letter written to the commission, signed by, uh, eight different persons. And, and I'm told that, uh, not all those people would like to speak tonight, but there are eight different signatures on this. We only have one copy, so I'll just read it really quickly for you. It says, uh, "To the city of Eastvale, we strongly oppose and say no to the sale of beer and wine at, at ninety-nine cent store on Hamner and Schleisman Road. The sale of beer and wine at the ninety-nine cent store will attract undesirable clientele, vandalism and crimes from outside the region into Eastvale and become a public nuisance and permanent fixtures to our already vulnerable residential neighborhood. The existing grocery stores and convenience stores are already retailing alcoholic beverages and we don't need more liquor stores in the city. Furthermore, the seven eleven store by the fire station is only less than one block away and already retails alcoholic beverages. Adding one more retailer on the same side of the street, less than a block away, is completely excessive and is harmful to the residential neighborhood. Allowing liquor stores popping up everywhere is simply wrong and unacceptable. We strongly urge the city and the city planning commission, uh, stop permitting new liquor stores within the city and stop permitting the sale of beer, beer and wine..." stores within the city and stop permitting the sale of beer, beer and wine at the ninety-nine cent store at the corner of Hamner and Schleisman. And sincerely," and then there are eight signatures under that.
I see some blue, blue forms out there. Did we, is there anybody that wanted to turn in a blue form to speak and didn't earlier?
This is the time.
Yeah.
Yes, so we have a record of who spoke.
Yes. So what you can do is if you can state your name and address and, and you, you can give the blue form to, um, Jessica, right there. Just a reminder, we have three minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, could you repeat your address again?
Uh, one-two-seven-Nine-One-Still. And, um, every day, go to work, uh, come home from work, I pass by that door. And, uh, even the weather is going on for quite a few some time now. And, uh, conditions and congestion in that area, um, has not been improved for the fact of it. And, uh, my first question I have for the city, um, and, um, Eric and yours is, um, I think from the website, I found out that this planning of the, of application of the alcohol beverage, um, sale commission has been recommended for, for both by the city staff and us.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just for the, for the chair in the audience. Yeah, staff's recommendation based on our reading of the facts was to recommend approval of the use permit.
And what is the base of the recommendation?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Just because of policy, um, you would need to direct the questions to us and not staff.
And what are the, um, foundation for the recommendations for, from staff? There is a store existing probably for many years, seven-eleven. Already, I stopped by the store yesterday and just to, um, check out if they do need their alcohol beverage. And what is the reason for allowing another store to, uh, open such business in our very close neighborhood, actually deep in the city? I, I understand the reason we need that extra new store for seven-eleven.
Did you have any additional questions?
I think that's the rest of the questions are already, um, stated in the, um, statement already.
Okay.
And actually, on the backside, there's a few more signatures and there are seven, some people came in late and they would like to, um, they like some that are, um, also needed.
Is that okay for them to turn that in after or, or during the meeting?
Yeah, they can sign that right now.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll, we'll take your questions into, in consideration. I know staff did have a pretty detailed presentation, so maybe we can pull that up later, so, to address some of these questions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Hugh.
I think you want to answer your last question.
Thank you.
Oh, did, I have seven questions.
I'm sorry, could you state your address, please? Uh, your address.
Oh, I, one-three-in-Grover Court.
Thank you.
Ninety-two-zero. I'm in Eastville, Fort Worth. I just want to raise the concern much. Uh, I think that, that can be a pretty good job for the store and I think I like it. The question is, maybe you before we gave a consideration, what's the percentage of alcohol selling come to the total revenue, average store revenue? Is it necessary to sell alcohol in City of Eastville in addition to the, the seven-eleven already have grocery stores? What if they don't sell alcohol? Does it hurt their business? That's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lee Kui Ping.
Um, my name is Keith Lee. I'm living at one-three-six-six-one, very chic, called, uh, the crossroad of the ninety-nine cent store. And I, I guess that people still buy and leave at ninety-nine cent store because it is very close to the school, the street school right up there. And then, um, I don't think it's necessarily they have to, and other people saying they buy at seven-eleven store. And at the beginning, they, um, but they gave another presentation, included comparison, oh, maybe they have, they would allow the show alcohol investment for, uh, here, uh, Johnson's seven hundred, uh, feet or whatever. It was, the number was less than two thousand feet from the school, but we have to consider whether they get that data is that the seven-eleven field before the school, not the school. I mean, if they were, they were there before and then this, I know the activity they were doing, and then, um, that is not, still be considered a comparison condition of that the vice versa. So overall, I don't think it's necessarily they have that, uh, by ninety-nine cent store. And, and on the top of that, um, they, they think that is something like certainly they could, they're trying to bring their own business, make their business competitive. And the city was keep the, um, consideration that at the Schleisman, there's no stock side, I mean, there's no chocolate bar. Maybe they're not trying to school. If they have that, it's gonna make it very, very difficult, very dangerous for people to try to, um, turn the road to the one. Um, because I think in that area, I see many accidents happen. Even people try to get a rent control. I guess they might have been quite cold last year. And, um, and I went to the city and asked the chocolate bar, they told me that it's not, at least they're not, uh, the, the chocolate bar. But they, they think even if they're a little, um, sort of here and right, we're gonna get office and everything, no chocolate, it's more dangerous for the people to try to, uh, with, with no chocolate bar and most of that.
Thank you.
Can you, can you repeat what, because there is a traffic light at that corner. What streets are you saying there's no traffic light?
On the area, when you get off the area of Schleisman, you need a left turn toward the other, you need a left turn toward the school on Scholar. There's no chocolate bar. There's many accidents happen. It's in part of the north end.
Our next speaker is Richard Wayne.
Hello, everybody. Um, so my name is Richard, uh, the one-three-one-two-zero-Birds Way. So I think it's built for years.
One-two-one-three-one?
Bird's Way.
Birds Way.
E-E-R-T-I-S. So this is my job here in Eastville, um, and I compare with my neighbors that, um, I think they have enough neighbors' voices already. And having two, if, uh, very close area, East of Tompkins, um, a lot of potential problems that they should talk about. And I also, also like to ask, um, the agenda says the approval is subject to conditions and approvals, of course, uh, in fact, uh, what are the conditions? And I also have a question for the technicals who, he mentioned, uh, the years old is still , still warm, there's no chill. Is that just a school policy or is that gonna be ruled a common sense? So if they decide to offer some chill to the year, six months or twelve months later, um, would there be any regulations that we have against that? Some questions on that.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Sue.
Good evening, I'm John School and I'm in, uh, seven-sixty-nine, five-six circle. And I just wanted to bring one attention that alcohol getting more involved in our town. And what I want to say, hoping not, I'm just in the alcohol, uh, through, in the hospital in our alcohol shortage. I do get myself, you know, but I would, I just think like this law is becoming a lot of alcohol, uh, each effort, just, so it's likely to be cut down, you know, just because that's, that's all I'm, thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker.
Sorry, I was, I'm, I'm sorry, um, we, we have to keep the, we have to keep the meeting going, so.
She needs to address you up there.
Yeah. Well, actually, um, if it's a quick question, you can, you'll be allowed to address us at the podium right now.
I can know before this meeting, I just want to know quickly that this permit is going to be, uh, fixed to the land. I approach more of that than ever because it shouldn't be that way, especially if it's conditionally used.
I'm sorry, and for the record, could you address your name and address again for that comment?
Very cool. Uh, address is, uh, one-two-seven, there's.
Thank you. Is there any more comments?
No, we do not have any more comment cards.
Okay. So with that, I'll, um, I mean, is there any comments for the applicant or?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Since, um, at the end of the applicant's, um, uh, presentation, um, you mentioned about Corona ninety-nine cent stores and a few others in the area. But I, I was just Googling it to find out where else ninety-nine cent stores are located and the communities that I'm kind of comparing ourselves to, I think, is Chino Hills and Rancho. Do they have alcohol permits too?
My apologies, I usually have prepared real full of the agency websites, so I do not believe that Chino Hills has all the application outside. I'm actually, like, I'm waiting for the application to sign and I just do not look at the application.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Just, you said the display is about seventy-two square feet?
Yeah, approximately, yeah.
And the building is twenty thousand square feet? All right, thanks. All right, thanks.
We, we don't, we, like, say thirty-six feet and some stores, we don't do about twenty feet and, and they, the shelves are about two feet deep and so.
Could you also address, um, a couple of the questions that the, um, the community had in regards to the revenue, the percentage revenue of the alcohol sales as well as the, uh, the, the coolers or, or refrigerate, refrigerator issues?
Typically, our percentage of alcohol sales is, are going to run about like twenty-two percent of our overall, our gross sales, um, there. While, um, that sounds like that's a small percentage, um, anybody who's had an opportunity to work with the grocery industry, I understand that we're on extremely narrow margins. We are on single-digit margin of every product type that we got, including alcohol, or the personal skate, competitive and have people. She just said a shop parcel, we have, uh, that, that product line to, uh, that we help any of those customers there. And certainly, yeah, it, it is a, it obviously contributes to our product line, it, it represents about one-two percent of our sales, but it is, uh, grocery services. The chilled product, our standard policy is, is right now, I'm not aware of any of our stores, I, I, I don't go every store or every line that we, that we, that we create any of our, any of our product. There's a possibility that, that could change, but we haven't, we, since I've been working with that for the last five years, all of our stores have been closed stores. We have a great new conditions, um, for communities that, you know, might say that that's over there, to, to start a new line with a little that, um, as a condition, I think, uh, flexibility, but, you know, it is the, um, first condition, um, we're certainly going to get that condition for. I, I don't want to be the guy to make representations and, and, can't, if I, if I represent, we're really, really, that's our conditions, uh, for, including the number of lineal feet we've dedicated to display, our three, those conditions, the four-two, max of thirty-six lineal feet. Seventy votes that is really designed for our grocery shopping customers and, and we don't need anymore of that space, so maybe we certainly do that. I think we need some extra assurance that, uh, we'll, 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 we can, we can, we can, we can, we can. There's a couple of other items that were mentioned here, um, Mr. Hugh, or Hugh, I'm sorry, I missed, missed, grabbed your name, um, talking about a lot of stores. This is actually one of the rare instances that I hear in a census tract that's not over concentrated. Most census tracts I work with, um, communities, um, are in a over concentrated state. Now, that's not that large because through zoning, all cities we have a tendency to zone all of our commercial property in kind of the, the same area there. And that's where we're merging grocery stores and restaurants and, and gas stations and so on and so forth, and so guys are resolved. That's where they locate and they, they do that. When I was looking back and I noted, there is actually no license for this actual census tract, which, in my world, is, is an extreme rare. So in this particular area, there, there's not a lot of, um, places. In terms of, of running with the land, I did, I want to address this with staff. Like, my impression is when I, when, uh, a use permit run with the land, typically your, your code would say that if a business has ceased to operate or a location has ceased to operate for six months or a year, typically the CUP automatically expires, um, and so they come back to reapply. Is that true in Eastville?
We do not, no, sir, we do not have an automatic expiration of use permits. Although if the use discontinued, the planning commission could possibly bring it here for revocation, but, uh, we don't automatically expire permits.
But as I said, you, 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 I'm worried about that. I think that was all of the ones that maybe got addressed for, for, so, yeah, thank you for wanting to give your time.
Thank you. And with that, I'll, um, close public hearing. And, um, I'll open discussions among the commission about the agenda item. Is there any particular concerns or comments? Start with Commissioner Lee.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff, if I may. In one of the conditions of approval, do we have, uh, no, no loitering signs required on the building?
Well, let me call up the conditions and I'll give you that answer. We have a, a condition that says that anyone discovered loitering shall immediately be informed to leave the premises. If you'd like to add a condition to have signs indicating that, we can certainly do that.
Okay. And, um, another question, um, now if, uh, it changes, um, ownership, and I know the CUP runs with the land, but do they have to reapply to ABC for a license or does that also run with the land?
I'm not an expert on that. I believe they would, uh, because alcohol permits are different, right?
That is correct. Alcohol permits are different. We make an application to the ABC. Yes, you do have to identify a particular location. But you also, it is also permitted to that individual operator. So if somebody else, if they, they would have to get approved by ABC to be able to do that. But if I was, you know, I have my license at this location, I can't just walk across the street and take a quick, um, I would have to come back and then get a, um, transfer from the ABC as well as permission from the city to be, um, the, the alcohol licenses is kind of a double, a double that is, is a specific to a location, it's also specific to a location.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lee?
Sure. So again, I, I just want to thank, um, the public for, um, coming out here and voicing your opinion. So again, I just want to thank the public for coming out here and voicing your opinion. This is exactly what we need from the commission. And I just want to thank you for coming out and taking your time to kind of, you know, at the same time, commenting as well as questioning some of the elements of the project, which is exactly how we would like to see the community operate. So I just want to echo that. With that said, I, I, again, you kind of, kind of sensed it, but I think there are some concerns that I personally have in terms of, as a, as a land use planner perspective. I think what my main concern is, it's basically the business right now is isolated. And there are other commercial uses that are going to be coming in the future, including possibly our future city hall near the area, as well as the large commercial area across the street. So I think it's, I, I think for, for, for me, like, you know, I'm not speaking for other commissioners here, but for me at least, I think it'll be wise for us to kind of look at the other commercial uses that are coming in in the future and then kind of make our determination at the time. So that's kind of how I stand right now.
Question number two?
Well, since I'm the only female here, I can almost guarantee you that I do more shopping than you guys do. So, you know, the beautiful part of the process that we have as a government is making sure that everyone has their voices heard and there's legal ways that the process needs to happen. And our city's been very carefully planned and we have great staff. I've been on the planning commission from day one and we have a very diverse community. And the one thing that I would hope we would have is more senior housing because we all have parents and grandparents who can't live here. But part of them living here and being close to family, they also are on a fixed income and need a place to shop. Now, are you going to shop at Albertson's? Are you going to shop at Walmart? Are you going to shop at 99 Cent's? But the point is, as a mother, three kids, as I was running around trying to be a good mother, I like my choices and I like my convenience because I'd rather be spending time with my family. I believe the professional staff that we have, all of those of us who've been appointed have been appointed because of our objective professional experience. And I like to see these choices. The fact that it's a warm display, I think, is a great option. I think I would have issues if it was cold. The other fact that you don't sell single items, let me tell you, there's more single stuff going on, gas stations and where stuff is happening than somebody going to 99 Cent store who's basically a mother trying to get soccer, you know, the, the weekly snack kits and, oh, by the way, yeah, my husband and I want to have something. You can tell by my color of my hair, I've been a shopper for decades. The other thing, from a quantitative standpoint, the footprint is less than a half percent of this store. This is not a major component. It is going to be a secondary, oh, yeah, by the way, convenient. The citizens of this community do not have children and minors and our police force. I do not see this as a place where kids are going to go to get their six pack of beer that's warm. That's just, I, I just don't see it. We have professional staff that dots i's and crosses t's and I do not see any legal reasons that we can deny this, so. That's all I want to say.
I concur with most of the things that she said, not all, but most. But my question would be is, we don't take into consideration, and this would be to Craig for staff, we don't take into consideration what products are in the store when we're looking at traffic count. We've already set that in motion when we approved it to be a retail center. So one of the questions that the audience had was traffic lighting and increased traffic because of beer and alcohol. I think we've already, you know, covered all the traffic previous to this right now as if when we actually approved it to be a retail center. So I want to make sure that we answer that question correctly, so the audience has a good understanding of that.
No, no. Yeah, Craig Brett, supervising engineer. Yeah, there's no difference as far as the retail counts go, as far as the trip generation and traffic impact analysis. There is a signal going in at Mississippi, which lines up with the driveway for the 99 Cent store. There is a signal that will be going in. Yeah, on that, that's, that answers your question.
It did.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that the audience understands, if they have a concern like that, I want to make sure they understand, we look at that stuff. We know what traffic lights are going in. We've already taken traffic count into consideration when the project first comes forward. So my second question would be to our legal department. That is, if, if we said originally that this is something was going to be allowed in our general plan and we don't have a valid reason, even though we understand the concern of some of the residents, on what basis can we say no?
In order to grant a CUP, you have to make certain findings, which Mr. Norris went over earlier in the meeting. So specifically, you have to be able to make the finding that the application is consistent with the general plan and all applicable immunity codes, which I think staff has already presented to you, that the police department didn't have any issues with the granting of this CUP and that it was zoned appropriately for this location. The other thing the commission would need to do is to find that the use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. So the commission has to make findings either way to approve or to deny the CUP. So you'd have to have the facts to make those findings.
That answers that? Thank you. No further questions for me.
Vice chair? Yeah, I have some comments and some questions. I think there's been a misunderstanding by some of the residents. 99 Cent store isn't going to be opening a liquor store. It's going, asking the ability to sell beer and wine on a small portion, in a small portion of their store. But I hear their concerns. I would like to add some conditions to the CUP. One would be a no loitering sign on the outside of the building. Second would be to require that the beer and wine stays warm sales. Maybe to, they say that it's thirty-six linear feet, maybe make it like a maximum of fifty linear feet. Give them the opportunity to expand somewhat. And then, no cold sale of beer or wine would be allowed in the store. Would my colleagues agree with that?
My only concern, and this would be for staff, because it's around a retail and there's commercial retail going to happen across the street. As we've allowed restaurants to sell beer and wine, my main concern is consistency. If we put that restriction on this applicant, what about the other commercial businesses across the street that might come with same applicants? How can we deny one and approve it someplace else? That would be my only concern is now we're setting something up and we've worked so hard to be consistent with all of our applicants. I, I agree with everything, except I think that would be hard for us to continue to be consistent.
Actually, I'd like to add to that, but I know the sign may be an issue because of consistency, if that is, is an issue with other locations. But we don't have any other locations that claim that they only sell warm beer, correct? So that we can still have a CUP without a conflict for consistency.
Well, I hope I'll be able to address both of those questions. Each CUP should be evaluated on its own merits and, as you know, you want to be consistent as you apply those standards. But each factual situation is and will be different. I think the applicant offered up some additional limitations that they would be willing to agree to. So the conditions that were just, the additional conditions that were just brought up would be consistent with what the applicant offered. So if the applicant is offering those conditions and is willing to agree to any additional conditions along that line of thinking, I think it would be acceptable. And I, I think that planning would, do you have any additional?
Yeah, if we go, we put the applicant's slide back up here. And as this commission, I think, will recall, one thing that we always advise you to do is listen to the applicant and when they make a statement, to be sure and include that in your motion. So in addition to the items that Commissioner Oblea mentioned, the ones that are up on the slide here that you might also want to add, one would be no singles. Now, we haven't conditioned other outlets not to sell singles, but we have conditioned them to only sell singles that are larger than twenty ounces. Costco has a conditional use permit for alcohol sales. We put that condition on Costco. If you go into the smart and final store, you'll see twenty-two ounce bottles singly, but nothing smaller. So that, that would be a condition you could impose. The applicant has suggested a minimum of a three hundred and seventy-five milliliter wine bottles. That's basically a split. That's something we haven't imposed on other outlets, but if he's willing to agree to it, that would be a condition you could impose. And then up here, he says, down toward the bottom, no advertising in the store windows for beer and wine. We haven't put that condition on other alcohol sales in the city. But again, if the applicant's willing to agree to that, that would certainly be another condition you could impose. So the ones that would go a little bit outside of what we've done for other stores would be the warm display or the, the warm only, because we haven't, everybody else is going to be selling, I believe, chilled. The window signs, the, the limit on the size of individual wine bottles. But other than that, the conditions that are being discussed here are consistent with what we've done on other stores. I don't think we've put a condition requiring no loitering signs on any other alcohol store, although, as I mentioned, there is a condition here that they immediately tell anybody who's loitering to leave and then call the police if they have problems with that.
In our packet, it says the summary of COAs shows eight AM to eleven PM. I know the store closes at ten for consistency. Can we make sure that the conditions actually show ten? I think all the restaurants also that do have onsite consumption, don't they have to stop at ten or an hour before closing?
We handle those differently. We require any onsite sale where you're actually buying and drinking alcohol there, that they stop serving an hour before they close. So we're not encouraging people to drink right before they leave the restaurant. Right. And I'd like to-
I think they had additional questions.
I have another question for you. I will, I'll agree with the singles, adding the singles sales condition to that, if it's, if we've done that with others. And also, if they do decide to add a cooler for their beer and wine, would they be able to come back to the planning commission to amend their CUP? Or does it stand the way it is?
No, they could also come, they could always come back and ask for an amendment. So if, if you can, if you approve this permit and condition them to sell only warm product and they decide at some point in the future to change, they could come back to the planning commission, amend that condition, and if it's approved as an amendment, they could start selling chilled. So you could certainly do that.
Okay. I would be in favor of the CUP with the conditions that were added.
And just to clarify, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, the condition or their, their representation that they're not going to advertise for beer and wine in the store windows, would you also like to add that or do you feel that's necessary?
Yes.
If it's the consensus of the commission, I would agree to that.
Oh, yeah, it is, and I didn't see it on there. I mean, if we do choose to approve it, I would like to see it.
If the applicant is willing?
Can we ask the applicant if they're willing?
Sure.
From what I understand, yeah, the conditions would be more than I repeat. I don't think we have the conditions.
That's private sector, you run your business that way.
But the answer to the question is, is that if we agree to those conditions before, if we, if we were to sell chilled products, we have, we, 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 we might grant that. If that's something that you.
Fine, thank you.
As far as the bullet points here, compared to our conditions, I think it's the, the warm display and the advertising that's not on the current conditions, correct?
The additions that, that I've got from my notes, from what I heard Commissioner Oblea say in his motion, we'd be adding conditions that they don't sell any single beers or if you wanted to make, clarify that, nothing smaller than twenty ounces, which is typical. We'd be adding a condition per the applicant's presentation that any wine has to be at least three hundred and seventy-five milliliters. No window ads for beer and wine. They'd be limited to fifty linear feet of shelf space for display. It could be warm only. And then the only other thing I have here, we're going to change it to eight AM to ten PM to be consistent with their hours. And then the only question I have, just my notes aren't clear, are whether you'd like to add a no loitering sign or whether you're comfortable with the condition that they simply don't allow loitering.
So how do they enforce that if there's somebody loitering? What do they do? Is there, they just go up and tell them you've got to leave or?
They would tell them they have to leave and if they don't leave, they would call the police.
We, we don't currently request that of any other retail establishment today, right?
We have not done that for any other establishment, no.
Okay. I'm fine.
And, and are we adding, are we adding the, the chilled product?
No, warm, warm only.
Okay, so I mean, are we going to restrict that as part of the?
Just warm only.
Because I didn't hear Eric list that.
I think, yeah, that, that was in my notes from Commissioner Oblea's motion, was warm display only.
Mr. Chair, I have a procedural question. So, you know, my, I'm not against the, the, the use per se, but I am against the timing of it. So if we, let's say if I make a motion to deny it and they get denied, do they have an opportunity later on to come back when other uses are in place and apply for it again?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if, if this is denied by the planning commission tonight, the applicant could do one of two things. They could appeal your decision to the city council. And we would schedule that at the next available council meeting. There would be another public hearing, the noticing a thousand feet out would go out again, and the council would hold their own public hearing and make a determination whether to approve or deny. Or the applicant could come back at a later date and reapply. So what we've done in other cases like that is the commission and, and in some cases the council has denied without prejudice, which would allow them to come back within a short period of time. But if we're waiting for the other uses to come in, that's going to be at least a year in the future.
Mr. Chair, I, I have a question, I guess, for Commissioner Lee of your concern on timing. Could you clarify that?
Sure, I was just concerned about the, the current commercial use. That's the only commercial use we have currently going forward. So we have other commercial uses that we're envisioning in the future in the area.
where everybody's kind of collaborating or, or coming in around the same time, I think we can make a better decision. That's, that's what I'm trying to get at.
But aren't you asking to have a crystal ball? I mean, private sector is trying to establish a business today and they're trying to plan for their product to be able to be open and service the community. We can't control what private sector is going to be coming to us. I mean, developers, that's, we have no control over that.
But we can certainly not control, but we, we can certainly have a say in when they apply for permits in the future for any of these sites. They will be coming in with any type of ABC permits in the future. And at that time, we'll make a determination based on all the, all the facts at that time for those projects, for those particular projects. So from the commission's side, I think it's more prudent to consider everything at that point when everybody's kind of coming in at the same time. I'm not against the idea of the, the uses and I'm not trying to control the private uses per se, but we can certainly, from the commission's side, can make a better decision when we have all the, all the facts and information.
So before I solicit for a motion, I'd like to add my two cents to things. My opinion, not fact, is we've seen certain issues with similar establishments like 7-Eleven, multiple liquor stores and so on and so forth. So to say there is no impact, that's just not true. It will invite certain elements, but we have conditions to try to mitigate these issues as best as we can. I think Commissioner Lee forgot about Commissioner Oblea and myself. The four of us were here at the beginning of, of this project. My concern is, one, I think Commissioner Charleston mentioned the inconsistencies in the development and also what I heard from the applicant on just preparation and, 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 you know, you being a third, them being a third party and addressing the developer. So that doesn't give me, you know, happy feelings, but that aside, right, fact, I've personally been out with code enforcement to 7-Eleven, to the construction site as well for violations that people called out on. 7-Eleven, multiple visits, there's just people hanging around, there's graffiti, everything in the back alley. I mean, I've personally been there, okay, with code enforcement. I was also there when there was a, a code issue. I think they, they had to sort of fence off a, a big hole because there's a church next door, right? That took a while. That took, I think, about two weeks from my understanding. The commission does have a lot of questions and concerns. Obviously, the public's concern should be weighed heavily as well when we make our decision. I would probably recommend for the commission to sort of think about is, I mean, we could continue this and have more data presented to us. I personally would like to see the data on code enforcement to make the comparison. If we, if we're scared or worried about loitering or other elements, you know, I'm not sure what, what the sheriff's department can give us on service calls there, but I, I know we have direct access for code enforcement on how many calls or how many complaints have been submitted to 7-Eleven and the current construction site as well, because I think that sort of gives us a better picture if we're comparing apples to apples. With that then, is there a motion for approval or conditions?
Well, that was, that was pretty heavy, so I, I have one other comment after that. So my, and I concur completely with the chair. I think, and this would be addressed to the applicant, but you, you don't need to stand up, is that my feeling really is on the same line, is that 99 Cent Store has been completely unprofessional, the way they presented this originally. They brought a vice president forward. He gave us this warm and fuzzy speech about, I live here, I'm going to babysit this project from start to finish, and we've had none of that. So at this point here, you know, we need to make a decision, my feeling tonight on this. And because even if we deny it, it's, he has the right to go to the council. But I still want 99 Cent Store to understand that they have not been this upstanding company that they keep talking about. They just have not been. So if, but that's not the basis that we're talking about tonight. We're talking about wine and beer sales at a grocery store establishment. That's, that's the bottom line. And if we take it farther than that, you know, the council is here to back us up. So if we choose to say no, the council will decide or they can come forward farther, but I think we need to make a decision of some kind.
I, I would say that, you know, the nice thing about America is we have the option and choices as private sector. And the challenges that California has, I believe, is overregulation. If, this is a grocery store that has less than half percent of warm beer and wine. We've got excellent code enforcement. If, I, I just, it's, it's not 99 Cent Store's responsibility of what a property owner does. And it's a large company, decisions are made from a corporate side. What we can do as a city is make sure that we enforce the regulations that we have. And we are pretty tight in this community. If the neighborhood sees something and doesn't like it, we will all see, they will boycott the store. And I believe the community should either decide whether they're going to support the store or they don't. Same thing with Walmart. You either like the store or you don't. You like Albertson's or you don't. This is about a grocery store selling beer and wine and I, I just feel that there's certain parts here that, you know, we've added five additional conditions. It's a commercial area. It's going to be even more as the other developments go in. And I just feel we are overly micromanaging things that we don't already have in place to make sure that this remains a viable public option for low-cost goods.
Mr. Chair, I, I completely agree with Commissioner Patel in terms of California having overregulation and having businesses having problems with overreaching of, of their businesses. But I think the, the, the main issue that I, I currently have is basically if we just let the businesses just do it, that means it, it becomes just basically first come, first served, because we have a limited amount of permits that we can issue, ABC can issue. And for this particular area, what I'm trying to say is there are other commercial properties that are planned for this area. We have great plans for, for this whole area. And if we, if we allow just first come, first served basis, have people get the permits, I think that's, that's, that's the concern that I have. And then that's why I bring up the timing issue currently.
Can that be a question to staff as far as the number of limited permits within the city?
Well, ABC has their own limits that they impose. And as the applicant mentioned, ABC has a standard that they maintain for the appropriate number of alcohol licenses. In a, they go by census tract and they, a certain number per capita. At next week's city council meeting, Costco will be in front of the, of the city council asking for the council to determine that they should be able to sell alcohol. In their census tract, the state feels it's over-concentrated. It's kind of a quirk of the fact that hardly anybody lives in that census tract, but as you mentioned, down in this part of town, we have run into that same issue. There are more people and not that many liquor outlets to begin with. So we don't have a standard as a city that says how many alcohol sales, use permits or whatever there should be in town. That's something that we could consider having, but we don't have that currently. We rely on ABC to make that determination. And then if it's over-concentrated per their standard, it comes back to the city council and they have the ability to say at that point whether they agree or not with, with ABC.
So adding the, the, the conditions today moving forward, so would we be continuing it to a next meeting or approving it with the conditions as said now?
I make a motion, we take staff recommendation and approve the permit with the additional five conditions of warm only, no signage in the window, wine minimum 375 milliliters, no single beer cans under 20 ounces, and no more than a maximum of 50 feet, of linear feet of display area for the beer and wine.
And approve the exemption from the CUP?
And approve the exemption, yes.
And Mr. Chair, I think there was also changing the hours to-
Oh, till 10 o'clock.
So to answer your question, Mr. Chair, I think our notes are sufficient, you know, as we've done in the past. We'll modify the conditions should they get approved this way, to add those conditions and make that change in the hours of operation and present that to the applicant for his signature.
So I second that motion.
Vocal?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
No.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fang?
No.
Motion passes 3-2.
Thank you, Commissioner. And for the audience, as we mentioned earlier, the commission's decision is final unless it's appealed. So that appeal has to happen within 10 calendar days from tonight. And if you have any questions, if you'd like to file that, Brienne Reyes, the project planner, will be happy to help you. But unless it's appealed, the decision tonight is final.
Which is approval?
Yes, it has been approved unless it's appealed.
Alrighty, that was a good item. Moving on to item number seven, presentations.
Well, we don't have any presentations, Mr. Chair, but I just have a, a couple of brief notes here to mention. I think you've, you may have already heard, if you've been out there, you've seen the Costco store up in the Goodman Commerce Center started grading last week. They were a little slow because it was raining early in the week, but I believe it was Tuesday they kicked off grading. If you subscribe to the city's Instagram feed, you saw an aerial shot of the graders underway. I spoke with the construction superintendent when I was out there last week and they'll be out there for about a month grading. Basically, they need to overexcavate and then replace and recompact the soil to prepare it for, you know, to hold up the buildings. So their schedule has them opening by the end of June and we're going to do everything we can to get them open sooner than that. We've, everybody, building, public works, everybody at City Hall, I think, has consistently exceeded their expectations on how fast things happen. But they've asked us to have building inspectors out there when they're under construction or at least ready to inspect 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So we've done that before on the Amazons, the Amazon buildings, we'll, we'll do it again here. Once they start the building, it's just very quick. So they're going to be working around the clock. Up there in the Goodman Retail Center, we've already approved a couple of buildings. If you recall, the, the first two buildings at the corner, you'll see here in the near future, the, the third of their buildings, the, what they call CR3 up on Cantu Galiano, which will be a, a small building with Starbucks drive-through in it. So you'll see that coming through. There's a lot of other exciting stuff happening. We don't have applications yet, so I can't tell you about any of it, but Goodman has called this the year of retail up in their project. So they've done the Business Park, they've done Amazon, they're doing their third industrial building, and this is the year of retail. This is really their focus for this year is to tenant up the retail, excuse me, and really see that project come together. They've been waiting for the Costco to be under construction. Now that that's happening, everybody's going to start knocking on their door because now they know the Costco's coming. So the other thing I would mention in our, in the package tonight, you would normally see our monthly update, but because we didn't do one last month, it'll be in your next package, but it'll be in next week's council package. So I invite you to go and look at that if you want to get it hot off the press. And that'll also go on the website right after the council dent is, is published. Lots of stuff going on.
Thank you. Is there any other, oh, sorry.
Let me, let me just give our public works update real quick. The big project, the I-15 Limonite Bridge project, on January 9th, the county board of supervisors approved a resolution of necessity that basically allows them to go and do Emmett Domain on right-of-way they haven't obtained yet. That allows them to get what's called a right-of-way cert. And now the, we have, have utility agreements that are going into place. Projected construction is August, September. They're trying to make that, perhaps make that move a little bit quicker. There's been some questions. We've got this cell, we have this potential tax ballot measure, trying to repeal the gas tax. We really encourage, there's going to be a lot of promotion. We really don't want it to be repealed. Not, not that, I should mention that this project, the Limonite Bridge, is not impacted. It's part of what's called the Prop 132 trailer bill. That actually came out of last year's state budget. That was a, an earmark for a number of projects that Riverside County got that that money will not be taken away if it is repealed, but we still don't want it repealed. This is actually one of the few times we've, we were getting additional funding to, to work on roadways and so forth. And it, it about doubles the amount of money that we receive for repair of roadways and widening of roadways. One of the projects that we're doing is the widening of Hamner Avenue and that will be out to bid probably in about two or three weeks. It'll be awarded either the end of the second meeting in February or prob, more likely first meeting in March. That'll be adding basically additional lanes widening in front, full widening in front of Swan Lake. And we're also going to add some additional lanes southbound. And it, it's quite a, it's a very important project considering the freeway interchange is going to lose 50, 60% of its capacity when they start working on that bridge itself. And so extremely important project. We've got to get done before the bridge actually starts construction. The other thing, our slurry project, it's almost done. We've had some questions about how rough some of the streets look. It's, it's what's called a type 2 slurry. It's thicker and it's, it's been a lot of fun for staff and for inspectors, but we're very close to completing it. There's also a number of the enhanced crosswalks going in that you'll see around the school areas and just really to make the crosswalks jump out more for the, the drivers. There's, our storm drain project is nearing completion. They're still working on the corner of Limonite and Hamner Avenue. There's a closure going on right now, it's night work. That's one of the last storm catch basins we'll be installing. I had one more other, one other thing and I don't recall it now. Must not have been that important. But anyway, that's the basic update. A lot, a lot is happening.
Ten more questions?
Mr. Norris, can you give us an update on the Liel property?
Yeah, well, actually, we passed a milestone on Sunday. Sunday was the deadline to file a challenge to our environmental document. We did not receive that, so we're in the clear. And we're just continuing to work with the applicant. We have a meeting with them tomorrow. We meet with them regularly, or with the property owner rather, to talk about the next steps in the process. So we'll be continuing to- steps in the process, so we'll be continuing to refine that. We've discussed having a discussion with the council just to kind of talk with them about how they'd like this next step in the planning process to go, but we envision it as a, you know, a shared discussion with the applicant about what the appropriate land uses are, rather than have them just kind of go off for a few months and come back with a plan. We'd like to work with them on that.
So for the audience, the, I'm sorry, the Liel property is the northwest corner of Hamner and Limonite. It's just that big field north of Ralph's and west of Vons that, so it's gone through the estate and so now the city's able to negotiate to get that developed and working for us.
Yeah, so, yeah, for those who haven't been following that process, we approved what's called a master plan, which establishes basically the approval to build a mixed-use town center, centered around a lifestyle retail center like Victoria Gardens, like the shops at Chino Hills, with other retail offices, housing, and potentially at some point in the future, a Civic Center Plaza. So a really exciting mixed-use project on that very large piece of land. The next phase now is for the developer to come back with a more refined idea of exactly what the land uses are and where they go on the property. A lot more detail about infrastructure, about the design that they'll have. So if anybody has questions in the audience about what that project is, I'd be happy to talk with, you know, with them after the meeting, but that's, it's a very large and important project and getting over the, now the master plan's been approved, our environmental document is okay, we're ready to continue moving forward.
Thank you.
Any other staff report?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, so moving on to Commission Communications, so with Commissioner Lee?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things. One is, Mr. Norris, I heard from SCAG staff that there was a meeting last week with them.
Yes.
So, you know, my, my comment would be, they tend to over-project for our city and they love to do that, so please push back as much as possible and make sure that we get our projections in there rather than theirs.
Yes, we had a very productive meeting with them. Several folks from SCAG came out. SCAG is the Southern California Association of Governments, they're the regional planning agency for the whole Southern California region. And yes, we were talking, they're starting the process now of projecting future growth in all of California and in this region in particular. And yes, they're projecting a lot more growth in Eastvale than we think is actually gonna happen, so we will be getting back to them with some more realistic numbers.
Good.
Vice Chair?
I'm good.
I just had a, one follow-up on the, actually two, I'm sorry. The invocation inquiry, it's, well, on my side, Pastor Mark is okay with it. Pastor Dennis is okay with doing it. I, I just didn't want them to get blindsided, so we reached out to them. And interesting enough, a city council member said if it's not allowed, then the pastors can technically write a blue speaker card.
Right. They can always fill out a, a blue public speaker comment card. I prepared a memorandum for the city manager and if she prepare, share that with you, then, I'm not aware of that. But basically invocations are not prohibited at city council or planning commission meetings, but there are some guidelines that need to be followed, such as not exploiting the opportunity for prayer, don't exploit it to convert someone, advance anyone faith or belief, or disparage any other faith or belief. So there are some guidelines that should be followed.
It would be the same at the city council.
Correct.
Well, the other thing, I'll, I'll speak to Eric offline, I don't wanna take up too much of the public's time. Well, with that, our next meeting is gonna be held on February 21st, same location, same time at 6:00 PM here, no?
No, actually, Mr. Chair, we're planning to send out notices for a special meeting on the seventh. I think we've already polled the commission and determined that we could have, that we would have a call in there. So February, February 7th and then we will probably also have a meeting on the 21st, but we'll see you here next on the 7th.
I'm sorry, correction, February 7th, 6 o'clock, same location.
Mr. Chair, can we find out what the, what's on the agenda?
Do we have the agenda prepared already for the 7th?
Oh, no, I think it's special.
Is there, can we disclose what it would be about?
Yeah, you'll have two items. One is what we call the South Millikan Project. So way up at the north end of the Panhandle, on the east side of Millikan, just north of the 60 freeway is a parcel that's currently zoned for retail. So they're proposing to rezone, well, actually half it's zoned for retail. They want a, a general plan amendment and a rezoning to make it all light industrial. And then there's a development plan approval for an industrial building on that parcel. So you'll see that coming to you. And then up on Riverside Avenue, Riverside Drive, if you go up Hamner and make a right on Riverside Drive, right before you go under the freeway, on the north side is a building that currently distributes sleepwear, clothing. And they have applied for a use permit to be able to open a small retail outlet in that building. So that's the other thing you'll see here. Retail sales as an accessory use like that in our light industrial zones are permitted with a conditional use permit, so the question for the commission, and you'll get a complete staff report, is whether it's appropriate in that location. So you'll see all the details on where they wanna do that, in the building, hours, signage, condition of approval, et cetera. So you'll have those two items.
Is that the same property that was going through the environmental issues with the habitat issues up in north? You know, there was a property there?
The South Millikan, yes, there were, yeah, you'll see in the environmental document a lot of discussion there, there was potential habitat for an endangered species and an endangered insect, so you'll see a lot of information about that, yeah.
Alrighty, we're good. And with that, meeting adjourned.